Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening for the regular December committee meeting of the County Legislature. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Rabbi Kutter?
Oh, source of life, we turn to you and ask your divine providence be upon us. We ask that you instill a sense of wisdom to those who are involved in our governance, and a sense of compassion to those who serve the community. We ask your blessings be upon those who help in the ongoing crisis of a pandemic that we are facing, and give them the wisdom and skill to lead us through with a sense of wholeness. Empower us with the ability to understand that we are responsible for each other, and give us the sense of dignity to see the face of God in everyone that we encounter. Give them respect, give them wholeness, give them a sense of blessing through our actions. We ask you to guide us and sustain us, and we do this with a sense of love for all that you have created. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Pascarella.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our regular meeting this evening, we have a few presentations to make. Our first is a certificate congratulating a member of our community who was recently selected as a winner of New York State's Vaccinate, Educate, Graduate Vaccine Incentive Scholarship. Would all District Three legislators please come forward to make this presentation?
Are we on? It is? I don't remember. The Vaccinate, Educate, Graduate Vaccine Incentive Scholarship is a five-week statewide program that consists of a series of drawings aimed to increase awareness of the availability and efficacy of COVID-19 vaccines. This program will give a total of 50 children the ability to attend any public college in the state of New York by awarding full tuition, room, and board, and allowances for books and supplies to any SUNY or TUNY school. So, children between the ages of five to 11 who received at least one dose of the vaccine before December 19th are automatically entered into the raffle. Naomi was among 10 named full during the second round of drawing in the incentive program on December 1st. And the Schenectady County Legislature is honored to congratulate Naomi on getting vaccinated and being named a winner of this scholarship award, the first in Schenectady County. We hope there will be many, but she is our first Schenectady County winner, and we wish her the best of luck in all her future endeavors. And you can't wait to go to college, right? Pretty soon, before you know it, you will be going, and there's your certificate from us. You're welcome. Do you want to say anything? No?
Thank you.
Now, I'll ask all District Three legislators to stand by in the well for our next presentation, which recognizes an outstanding achievement by one of our local high school athletic programs with the representatives of the New York State Champion Burn Hills-Boston Lake Field Hockey Team join us in the well for our next presentation.
All right, well, welcome. Don't be nervous. So, this is a resolution honoring the Burn Hills-Boston Lake Field Hockey Team as the 2021 New York State Class B Champions. How exciting. The Burn Hills Spartans have worked tirelessly to finish off another successful championship field hockey season, and after winning their last 12 games, the Burn Hills-Boston Lake Field Hockey Team has clinched another win, and subsequently has earned the top title of 2021 New York State Class B Champions with an overall record of 18 to 3 for the season. And the winning team... Okay, comprised of, we have KK Fett, Lily Mestrela, Emily Brooks, Amelia Landry, Grace Todd, Lily Lamore, Molly Pokabrowski, Jessica Lukey, Dawson Hild, Maggie Lansley, Maggie Holmes, Arson Nappet, Ally O'Rourke, Marty Cnealy, Kayla Hild, Carolyn Fogut, Maddie C, and Catherine Dethser. They held on for a two-to-one victory and a Class B win against the undefeated team in Garden City. And because of their hard work, dedication, and perseverance, as well as successfully coached by Kelly Gruman of the HBL Spartans, have successfully claimed their first state title since 1987. That was right after I graduated. And perhaps one of the most impressive features of the team's success is that it was truly a team effort, and their success was due to the overall effort of everyone concerned, from players, coaches, their families, of course, the community now. Therefore, be it resolved that Schenectady County Legislature celebrates and recognizes the Burn Hills-Boston Lake Field Hockey Team and their successful 2021 season as the 2021 New York State Class B Field Hockey Champions. Congratulations. But I need to get the others over. You guys know how to take them, huh? You do it all the time. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Take our final presentation this evening is to recognize another outstanding achievement for our local athletic program. Would legislator Fields and the representatives of Team Rafa of World Team Tennis please come to the well for our next presentation?
Well, good evening, folks. It's a wonderful opportunity to see another historic moment here in Schenectady County. We had some two championship things happen today, and now we have a third one here. I would like to announce that this is a resolution congratulating Team Rafa of the World Team Tennis League on its outstanding 2021 season and their victory of the 2021 National Championship Tournament in Orlando, Florida. Congratulations. And a resolution signed by all the members of the legislature here. It says, "World Team Tennis was founded by Billie Jean King and Larry King, Fred Barman and Jordan Kaiser, and Dennis Murphy and Frank Fuhr, and introduced professional team tennis competition to sports, to the sports landscape in the inaugural season in 1974. And on May 6, 1974, the World Team Tennis match was played when the Philadelphia Freedom hosted the Pittsburgh Triangles at the Spectrum, with Philadelphia winning 31-25. And in 2015, World Team Tennis became one of the fifth U.S. Pro Sports League to reach the fortieth season milestone, joining the National Football League, the National Basketball League, the Hockey League, and also the Baseball League. And based on the concept of gender equity, World Team Tennis is also the first professional sports league to feature men and women on the same teams. And Wales World Team Tennis has roots, or deep roots, in the capital region with teams playing in the leagues, often competing on courts in Central Park, Schenectady. And I must add to say, one of my sons is actually in one of these teams that played against you guys. Did not win the national championship. They've played in multiple teams. This is amazing. All right, so let's talk about Team Rafa here. Team Rafa, capital district-based world team tennis, has been a dominant force in the capital region for the past several years, winning local league championships in 2018, 2019, and also in 2020 and '21. Team Rafa has been a national qualifier finalist in 2018, a national qualifier winners in 2019 and 2020, and eventually tying for third place nationally at the national tournament in Palm Springs Indian Wells, California in 2019 with a record of 3-2. And whereas Team Rafa once qualified for the National Championship Tournament in 2021 and went to win the national championship, held in Orlando, Florida on November 21, 2021, with a record of five and zero during the tournament, defeating teams from Illinois, North Carolina, Missouri, California, and Utah. Now, it therefore be resolved that the Schenectady County Legislature congratulates Team Captain Joanne Rafa, Team members Gina Brighton, Misat Tohli, Jen Evans, Kathleen Kalmer, James Davies, yes, okay, Ryan Legg, Tim Brennan, Sean DeBois, Jesse McGuire, and their outstanding performance in their national championship victory. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our honorees this evening. Our next order of business is a public hearing regarding proposed Local Law E of 2021, which amends the county administrative code with regard to apportionment of the legislature to reflect the current census figures. At this time, I'd like to call toward this evening's first public hearing. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields. Mr. Russo. Mr. Pratt.
President.
King.
Present.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Gata. Mr. Sosha.
Here.
Mr. Pascarella.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Hostelich.
Here.
Svalano.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Jazinski.
Present.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the notice of this evening's public hearing?
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 20 of Municipal Home Rule Law, a public hearing is hereby called upon Propose Local Law E of 2021 to be held before the legislature of the county of Schenectady in the legislative chambers in the county office building, 620 State Streets, Schenectady, New York, on the 14th day of December 2021 at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of hearing all interested persons on the question of Propose Local Law E of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Amending the Administrative Code of the County of Schenectady Regarding the Size and Apportionment of Seats of the County Legislature."
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone wishing to address our first public hearing regarding Propose Local Law E, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on this public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment on Propose Local Law E? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. We'll now move to our second public hearing of the evening. Will the clerk please read the notice of this evening's second public hearing?
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 20 of Municipal Home Rule Law, public hearings hereby called upon Propose Local Law F of 2021 to be held before the legislature of the county of Schenectady in the legislative chambers in the county office building, 620 State Streets, Schenectady, New York, on the 14th day of December 2021 at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of hearing all interested persons on the question of Propose Local Law F of 2021 entitled "A Local Law to Provide for the Payment of Increased Salaries to Elected Officers of the County of Schenectady."
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone wishing to comment on our second public hearing this evening, Propose Local Law F? Anyone wishing to comment on the second public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment on Propose Local Law F? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. It will move to our Legislative Conference and Rules Committee to be chaired by legislator Fields.
Thank you all. The Rules Committee. First item on the agenda, Rules Number 73 and Rules Number 74 are two of the resolutions relating to honoring both the field hockey championship for New York State and also the world team tennis Team Rafa.
Move to report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has been moved. Resolution Number 75, a resolution to acknowledge and encourage New York State Department of Transportation to implement its plans to mitigate truck impacts at the Glen Ridge Bridge Road in Schenectady County. We have had many incidents there, and I don't know if the members from those districts are quite aware of what's going on and is not delighted in what they see.
I'm just curious, legislator Fields, what can we do to compel state agencies to move on this? It's been a number of impacts. I know that our colleagues here are interested and concerned, as is, I'm sure, the municipality. But is this a resolution bringing them to the table or just acknowledging that we're all behind the idea of them coming together on our behalf?
We're asking and requesting that they come together to actually work out some practical solutions to this situation that's occurring at the Glen Ridge Bridge there. We can't force the state to do anything they don't want to do.
Thank you.
I could interject real quick. In your packet, in the resolution, our Public Works folks have been speaking with New York State, and they're already working on some ideas for resolving the bridge strikes there. And we're encouraging them to keep moving forward, working with their town officials and our county folks to mitigate and lessen the number of incidents at that location.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm hoping that this will help. Anything that can be done to solve what's been happening there for so many years now, and it just seems to not get any better. And I think legislator Hughes has moved this to the floor, and I will second.
All right, Mr. Hughes and Ms. Gata, first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has been moved. Resolution Number 76, a resolution regarding the designation of the Tourism Promotion Agency for Schenectady County. Any comments in this particular resolution? This will work with the I Love New York program and various tourism projects going on here within Schenectady County. We've implemented this in 2017, and so we're just continuing with this.
But this is something that we do each year, and the designation we need to take in order to get the funding for I Love New York.
All right. Move to report. You have a second. Ms. Gata?
I think legislator Hughes seconded it.
Oh, Mr. Hughes seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is moved. And with that, Mr. Chair, the Rules Committee has come to an end.
Thank you, legislator Fields. It's now time for privilege of the floor. Members of the public are asked to limit their comments to three minutes, and please state your full name and address for the record. Any members of the public who would like to address privilege of the floor, please come to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Kevin Hammer. I reside at 15 Lafayette Street, Schenectady, 12305. I'm out here today just to speak to the leaders of our county in regards to what we have going on with mask mandates here in New York State. Now, one of the things that is constantly focused on by many people, especially those who advocate for mask mandates, is listen to the science. Well, that's what I'm asking you to do. As leaders of our county, I am asking you to actually listen to the science and what it actually says regarding masks. So, we do not have any real substantial studies that in any fashion strongly support the effectiveness of wearing masks. Now, I know some people will reference, for example, the Bangladesh study. So, that has many flaws, one of which obviously being the fact that they only tested people who were symptomatic, in that study, by the way, in those villages. So, we have no idea how many people, whether they were wearing masks or were not wearing masks, actually tested, actually had COVID. So, even that study, the one that a lot of people refer to when trying to argue that masks are effective and that the science shows it, has so many flaws, it is deeply flawed. So, again, I am asking you that when you express your opinion regarding mask mandates, please actually follow the science, because that's what I get told, that I should follow the science, and that's what I'm doing. Also, mind you, mandates, this was not passed through any legislative process, so why should we be following this? This isn't a law. This is one individual or governor who is power hungry. Again, follow the science. I've asked many people from all political walks of life, those who say they have studied the science, they have done the research. I've asked them to show me the research, for example, that supports masking and vaccinating our children. I have yet to have a single person be able to show this to me. So, once again, I'm asking you, when you speak on this issue of mask mandates, please follow the science. Fauci himself had to admit that this piece of cloth, or the papal mask, even the surgical mask there, they're not doing anything really, especially with the Delta variant. And even those N95 masks, the KN95 and KN95, which I wear one actually at my job for different reasons. Now, unless those are perfectly fitted to your face, they're not really all that effective either. And unless you're changing them regularly, because if they get any kind of moistness whatsoever, they're no good. I'll admit, because they're expensive, I stretch mine at my job. But, so the science isn't there either. So, and what are we going to do now with mandates? Because I have this beard, so even the KN95, the N95 masks, because of my facial hair the way it is, that impacts the effectiveness. Should we mandate what types of facial hair men should have, that they can have? Again, I ask you, follow the science. I guess that's really all I have to say, because one of the things that has frustrated me is there's been so many arguments from both sides. People, you know, obviously talking about rights, constitutionality, and those are important discussions to have, the rights of businesses... discussions to have, the rights of businesses, which, that's another thing. This isn't really about the rights of businesses either, because if it was, then it would be about businesses saying, "I want people to wear masks. I don't want people to wear masks." Pressure by the government is not a choice. That's another thing. But to go back, I really wanted to focus on the science this evening, because I'm not seeing it focused on at all, not by our governor and not even by our local leaders. So, I'm asking you to do that. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Good evening. My name is Vivian Parsons. I reside at 154 Manchester Road, zip code 12304. I too am also here concerning the mask mandate that was recently issued by Governor Kathy Hochul. Look, I get it, people are scared. They have been scared. There are a lot of unknowns, and wearing masks make you feel safer, for whatever reason. That is your decision. On the flip side, for those many individuals that do not see the effectiveness or the need for a mask, it is also their decision to choose not to wear one. People are tired. I know I'm tired. And we're just going to cut to the quick, they're not effective. Because if masks work, then why aren't they working? If masks work, then why are we still here 21 months later, still arguing about masks and their effectiveness? Why are we even talking about this? Why are we even treating an edict that came down from someone who's really acting as an emperor and who was surrounded by people who refused to tell the emperor that they have no clothes on? Because really, at this point, this is what we are dealing with. They don't work. If you choose to wear a mask, then wear it. If you don't choose, then don't wear it. But I don't see where anyone, whether elected or unelected, has the right to tell me or anyone else what you have to put on your face just to go out in public. If a private business owner wants to say you have to wear a mask, it's their private business, that's their right. But again, as Kevin Hammer had previously stated, no one has the right to force this on anybody else. And unless someone can point to me peer-reviewed studies that prove the effectiveness of masking, unless someone can show me where in the state constitution, in the federal constitution, in the New York State Penal Code, we're forcing people to wear masking in public everywhere they go is correct, there's a nothing burger. There shouldn't even be a conversation. And right now, what I'm asking you, on behalf of so many people in Schenectady County, stand on behalf of the people and not on behalf of a particular political narrative and say enough is enough, the choice is yours. We don't even have the resources to even enforce this. So, I'm asking you to put the politics aside, put the narrative to the side, and let the people choose what they want to do with their own faces, because enough of this. We're going on two years. It's not working, and people are tired. I'm tired. It's bad enough that we're forcing our babies in school to wear masks eight-plus hours out of the day, which is hypocritical, because the same adults who are forcing them to wear masks for eight hours out of the day are the first ones to peel the mask off their face the second they get the opportunity. Show me one adult right now that will wear a mask with no breaks for eight-plus hours. Show me one. But we're making our babies do it. But to say face and to puff our chest out and say we're doing something, we want to mandate masking in public, enough. It doesn't work. I'm just politely asking you, enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
My name is Patricia Vorus, and I live in the city of Schenectady. I have several issues. I agree with what the other two have said. However, I'm going to follow whatever the governor says, just because. Court Justice Clarence Thomas has suddenly discovered the Fourteenth Amendment. So, if you are bothered now, hold on tight, because I think we're caught between Jane Goodell and Roger Goodell. In case you haven't noticed, a lot of people making millions of dollars don't know how to play football the way they used to, and there are other people that are doing ridiculous things, washing primates from another country and worried about, you know. It's that kind of a world. Get used to it. There's going to be anything you can think of, from soup to nuts, and that's just the way it is. Read the Fourteenth Amendment and know where it's coming from. Won't hurt anybody to do that. On the issue of legalized recreational cannabis, I am so thoroughly opposed to it. I can't handle secondhand smoke from anybody around me. I have no tissue between the air coming in my nose and my brain. If you were to strike a match right now, I would smell the sulfur before you got to light anything that you had intended to light. It's bad, and I don't choose to believe that I'm the only one, but it could be that way. And another thing is, I'm kind of like a book person, you know? Sometimes I even give them away to people, and fortunately, other people, when they're through with them, set them on bookshelves. So, I picked this one up, "A Lullaby for Morons," based on a true story of America's first schoolteacher murder happened in upstate New York. But there's also these children that are special. They're called imbeciles and other names. But they are kept at a place called the Monastery, and I think we've heard that word around here. So, please be careful about the language, the language that you use around here. And if anybody wants this book, you know, it would reach me, and I'm on email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Good evening. My name is Shelley Dotson. I live at 1311 Cipriana Terrace in Schenectady, 12306. I just came tonight to address all of you and request that you consider not enforcing Governor Hochul's mandate on masking. Saratoga and other counties have said they are not going to enforce it. I know when this all started almost two years ago, I have three children, and they are two, one just graduated high school, one's in college, and my youngest is a senior. All of this is not protecting really anybody. In the beginning, it was two weeks to flatten the curve. Again, it's been almost two years. I'm not vaccinating my kids. I will fight to not get them vaccinated. There's not enough known about the vaccines. I'm sad that these little kids who are not threatened, or they don't, you know, have real harm if they get the virus, that they're getting a shot that has not been tested. They don't know the ramifications down the road of what might happen, and I just, I'm over all of this. I think a lot of the residents and a lot of the people of New York State have had enough. If I could move, if we didn't have a business in this county and in this state, I would be out of here. I think you really should consider maybe loosening up and not enforcing these mandates. People need to be able to live. I had an uncle commit suicide in October. It's affecting people's mental health. The children are being impacted mentally by this. It is just not healthy, and it's time we just stop. Just stop. It's a virus. If you want to get the vaccine, get the vaccine. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you're sick, stay home. Use some common sense. Wash your hands. Enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, privilege of the floor is now closed, and I'll call it toward the December Regular Meeting of the County Legislature. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Field, present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
Mr. Pratt.
Present.
King.
Present.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Gadda.
Here.
Mr. Socia.
Here.
Mr. Pascarella.
Here.
Mr. Paterni.
Present.
Hostelitch.
Here.
Ms. Valano.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Mr. Jazinski.
Present.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes from the meetings held on November 9th and December 6th. These are motion adopted minutes.
All moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We were receiving reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department of Ways and Measures, and the County Clerk.
Thank you. Committee reports. Legislator Hughes reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on December 6th, 2012, and reported to the Agenda Resolution Number 170.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Osterlitz with reports from the Committee on Health and Human Services.
Mr. Chair, the Committee on Health and Human Services met on December 6th, 2020, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 171.
Thank you, ma'am. Legislator Socia reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on December 6th, 2021, and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 172, 173, and 174.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Constantine reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting met on December 6th, 2021, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 175.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Fields reports from the Committee on Rules.
The Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 168, 169, 179, and 180.
Thank you, sir. And also reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on December 6th, 2021, and reports to the Agenda Resolutions 170, 174, 176, 177, and 178.
Thank you, sir. We have two ceremonial resolutions on the agenda this evening. They are Resolutions 168 and 169. I'll open the floor to discussions on these resolutions. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on ceremonial resolutions 168, 169. Members may know any resolution on which they wish to be recorded in the negative.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Socia.
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelitch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen aye, zero nay.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 171-21. Sponsors, legislator Osterlitz, the clerk will read.
Resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a lease agreement with Chamlo Realty Co., Inc., regarding office space for the Schenectady County Office of Public Health Services.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Socia.
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelitch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen aye, zero nay.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 171-21. Sponsors, legislator Osterlitz, the clerk will read.
Resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Schenectady County Sheriff's Benevolent Association, Local 3874, Council 82, ASME AFLCIO, for the correction supervisors bargaining.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Socia.
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelitch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen aye, zero nay.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 174-21. Sponsors, legislator Socia, the clerk will read.
Resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Schenectady County Sheriff's Administrators Association, Local 9920, Council 82, ASME AFLCIO.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Socia.
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelitch.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Fifteen aye, zero nay.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 173-21. Sponsors, legislator Socia, the clerk will read.
Resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Schenectady County Sheriff's Administrators Association, Local 9920, Council 82, ASME AFLCIO.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Mr. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Teruzo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Sosloj?
Yes.
Ms. Zavano?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution 174-21. Sponsor is Legislator Socia. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions in the office of the Schenectady County Attorney.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Teruzo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Sosloj?
Yes.
Ms. Zavano?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 175-21. Sponsor is Legislator Constantine. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services for emergency management equipment and personnel services.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Teruzo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Sosloj?
Yes.
Ms. Zavano?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 176-21. Sponsor is Legislator Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution approving the report of form and footing and adopting the tax apportionment basis.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Teruzo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Sosloj?
Yes.
Ms. Zavano?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Next item is Resolution 177-21. Sponsor is Legislator Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the extension of returned school taxes on the applicable town tax rolls.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Teruzo? Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Sosloj?
Yes.
Ms. Zavano?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski?
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 178-21. Sponsor is Legislator Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the extension of returned village taxes on the applicable town tax rolls.
Any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk please call the roll.
Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Teruzo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Socia?
Yes.
Mr. Pascarella? Mr. Paterni?
Aye.[1649.31]